Welcome to the December 11th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Mr. Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
If you'll bow with me.
Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for all the blessings in our lives and please help us make decisions that will follow the examples that you've led for us. And God just be with us this week and this month and through the holiday season and be with our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. LaLance. All right, we'll move in. You have the consent agenda in front of you. We have three items on the consent agenda.
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 140851 to annex an area located along Blackman Road and adopt for same a plan of services.
Move for passage on third reading.
Seven.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 140Z52 to zoning an area located along Blackman Road is commercial fringe CF District and highway commercial CH District, simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on third and final reading.
Second.
Mr. Washington, Mr. Smotherman. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 140Z53 amending the conditions applicable to planned commercial development, PCD District and planned residential development district located along Middle Tennessee Boulevard and East Main Street.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. LaLance, Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 14055 amending Murfreesboro City Code, Section 210 Procurement Code regarding procurement utilizing federal transit administration funding. Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 14049 amending Appendix C Employees Revised Pension Plan of the Murfreesboro City Code to comply with requirements regarding the treatment of same gender marriage by qualified retirement plans.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Number seven's been removed, but also want to say thank you, Mr. LaLance. I think it's shown interest on reading the book that's coming up, so we want to thank you for doing that. Move to item eight. Pursuant to Resolution 140ZR56 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 7.42 acres south of Indian Park Drive along Merchant Walk from Highway Commercial CH District to Residential Multifamily 16RM16 District, Mr. Robert Trent applicant, 2014-R26. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24th issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Our first public hearing coming to you from the Planning Commission is for you to consider rezoning property that's approximately 7.42 acres. The property is identified in orange on the map that you have been provided. You can see that it's located south of Indian Park Drive at the end of Merchant's Walk in the perimeter place, South Subdivision. The property is just west of South Church Street and is directly behind the Zaxby's located along South Church Street and the Wilson Bank properties. The applicants have made a request for you to rezone the property from its current CH zone, that's Commercial Highway District, to RM16, and that's Multifamily Residential District. The property was annexed originally in 1988. In the following year, 1989, was rezoned from RS15 to CH. Has remained zoned CH since that time. The property is bordered on the south with properties zoned RD, and that's Residential Duplex, and that is developed as two family dwelling development. The properties that are located between this parcel and South Church Street are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District, and many of those parcels are developed with offices, restaurants, or typical commercial type uses. To the north across Indian Park Drive is property zoned PUD, and that's the location of the Summer Lake Apartment Complex. And then to the west, property zoned RM12, Multifamily Residential District, and it's developed with cottage townhomes, or with townhomes called cottages of Indian Park. Under the CH zone, which is currently zoned today, it could be developed with various types of commercial uses, and it would be those types of uses you would see along Highway 231 or South Church Street. The applicants have requested that you change that zoning to RM16, and that's Multifamily Residential District, which would permit a density of 16 dwelling units per acre for this property. The CH zone would not allow any type of residential use, but the RM16 would. They'd like to develop the property as an apartment complex. The property itself is 7.42 acres. It's a bit of an odd shaped lot. You can see that the shape of the property is odd. Also, there's a portion of the property that is inundated with the 100-year flood plain of the Stones River, which would restrict some of the area that could be possibly developed. The Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department have submitted a letter stating that they have the capabilities of serving, providing sewer to this property. When the staff comments were originally prepared, we hadn't yet received that letter, but since that time we had, and prior to the public hearing at Planning Commission, we had that information as well. The applicants have submitted a concept plan, which is just that, just a vague concept plan showing what they might want to do with the property. But if you base the 16 dwelling units per acre on the total acreage of 7.42 acres, a maximum density of 119 dwelling units would be permitted. We know from looking at the property that there are some limitations on the property that may restrict how much of the land can actually be developed, but I'd like to present to you a scenario that gives you the most units that would likely result from this development, and the maximum would be 119 units. At the Planning Commission's public hearing, a question was asked which schools, district this property would be in, and it would be in the Casey Lane School District. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, after which they formulated a recommendation to you that you approve this zoning change request. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision regarding this zoning change request.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green?
I got one left.
Okay. All right, we'll start our public hearing, but before we do, we'll read the rules for our public hearing. We'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address. Ask you to speak no more than three minutes unless you're the spokesperson of a group. Address all comments to the council, please, and at the end of the hearing, we'll attempt to address all your comments, and each person will be allowed to speak one time. All right, we'll open the public hearing and we'll consider this zoning request. All right, scene oh one. We'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on first reading ordinance 140Z56 to rezone an area located south of Indian Park Drive along Merchant Walk Residential Multifamily RM16.
I have one question, Mayor, for Ms. Green. There is some of this property that will be hard to develop, so your density is really not going to be that, if I remember correctly.
The reality is there will be less than 119 units due to the condition of the property. I think that there will be less. I just wanted to present a big number.
You gave us a maximum, but, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Green, I have a quick question. Looking at the parcel itself and looking where it's zoned, Commercial Highway now, and the rough concept plan that the applicant has given us, is there any concerns that, as it is out there now with predominantly commercial office space that's on that street, that that's going to be an ingress and egress issue, trying to put an entrance and exit at the side of a cul-de-sac for 119 units?
We did. When the applicant came to us, they came with a plan to want to develop apartments here, and we pointed out that this doesn't look like an ideal site for multifamily. Normally, for a multifamily, they would have frontage on a major arterial so that they could have their sign on a major arterial. This is an odd shaped lot. I think it's been difficult for the bank to find any commercial user interested in it, and so the applicant that's come for you tonight, Robert Trent, is looking at purchasing this property from the bank to develop it with apartments. I think that we can work with them to have an access point that'll work, but we did counsel them that this didn't seem to be a prime apartment community location, as you normally see them with frontage on major arterials. There is an access easement from that cul-de-sac where you can go through some of the commercially developed properties to South Church Street, although I don't think it's ideal to use that as a main ingress egress.
Is that to the south down there? Is that the road that's all the way to the south that runs east to west?
Yeah, so I do have an illustration if the screen pulls it up, and this is in your packets, and that may help or answer you. But you can see the subject parcel. It's at 7.42 acres, and then for the sites that are developed, you can see how they're laid out, and you could, the parcel 1C has access to the cul-de-sac, and so there's an access easement where it can be crossed. And you can also see the access easement runs south along the subject property and through the Zaxby's side as well. And it was designed, of course, this was a commercial subdivision that was created anticipating a future commercial use, and it was designed so that they could all benefit from cross-access easements and limit those numbers of driveways to the property.
Is there any chance that that Arapahoe Drive continues to come out from the west, you know, to the east across this? You see that?
I see Dixon, I see.
It's way down to the south, the next to the last one to the south. There's Shoshone, and then above that is Arapahoe. It looks like it's stubbed out. There's a house at the end or a building at the end of Shoshone, and then, but there's not at the end of Arapahoe. You see that?
Yes, I see where that ends into the multifamily community. Are you looking at the orthophoto?
Yeah, my annotates off, and so I'm just looking at a map at the.
I have a map on the screen that shows the zoning and the orthophoto. Is this the street you're looking at?
Yeah, right in there, and it looks like it could continue on out. That's actually, the one that you're on right now is Shoshone, go up one street, or just a little bit, no, straight up.
Oh, north, okay, here?
Right.
One more.
There, no, down, right there.
That's a private drive.
Okay, so it can't continue on out through the middle of this thing?
No, I don't anticipate that. I mean, they could, if they wanted to continue this development, this development zoned RM12, they could connect to it, but as a separate development, then no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be extending that. So if the owners of the property that you're looking at purchased this, they could do it more of a master development, but as it is, Mr. Trent doesn't own that property, and so he wouldn't have any right to do that.
All right.
Ms. Green, do you have any concerns that, you know, it's predominantly all, it was developed and designed for commercial traffics and commercial use, and that this is going to significantly change what it was designed to do?
I think we certainly think it's unusual. Is Mr. Trent, would you like to come up? He's here. He didn't give me a, he didn't tell me he wanted to do a presentation, but it's certainly an unusual situation.
That doesn't make it wrong. Hello, I'm Robert Trent. Yes, it's a little awkward. It's a hard development site. It's got some flood issues, drainage issues. To find zone multifamily ground for smaller developments, 100 units or less, is difficult. The bank, as we chatted with them, they just had an appraisal on this, I think, end of December, December 2013, and had no activity for a year and a half. They've had no activity this year. And looked at the opportunity, maybe change it to a residential pursuit, considering the west and north boundaries are residential now. It's a linear zoning. It's probably going to be a destination use if it stayed commercial because the site visibility from the main drag is filled up with the banks and everything else. And again, we're talking about the number of units. We haven't spent a lot of time on site plan and design. Currently, where we are, we're at 78 units, because we think we'll probably have to detent the water in the back, or at least clean it. So it's not a large development on that site, because we're really working with about four acres, not the seven. But the bank's very interested to see if they can get some new activity and there's something stirred on it, and we're willing to help and try to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Do we know what bank owns it? Do we know what bank owns it?
No. Mayor, I think we looked at this in the Planning Commission and realized it was a sort of an infield-type project, and I think we're going to have more of these as we go on in the next few years, but his density doesn't bother me, because I know he does have some issues. It's going to cut that density down, and he gave us the 70-unit density. Indian Park Drive is a fairly well-major road. It really doesn't conflict with single-family homes. It is commercial on the other roadside, and it is a little unusual, but we need to try to see if this might work for everybody, because the housing demand in that area is pretty good, and it's a little unusual, but I think we need to examine it pretty closely. And I'll make a motion for approval.
And like Doug, when we looked at it on the Planning Commission, I felt like it was kind of an awkward situation as far as what the property's being used for, but obviously by the lack of participation of the people who live in the neighborhood behind it there to the north and the west of it, it doesn't appear like there's a whole lot of opposition to it. It will serve as a buffer, and I think that there might be just as much, or certainly there'd be equal to or more complaint if it were developed commercially. So I'll second this motion.
Okay. We have a motion and second. All right. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
I can have his name.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
No. Will pursuant to Resolution 140ZR57 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 6.8 acres at 728 West Thompson Lane from Single Family Residential RS15 District to Planned Residential PRD District. Mr. Gary Wisnewski for Landmark Homes applicant, 2014-R28. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is property that is owned by the former planning director, Mr. Adelot. He owns this property and has a contract to sell it to Mr. Gary Wisnewski with Landmark Homes. Through the process, he's removed himself from any of the review and from the meetings in which we discussed this process. He retired this past Friday, but I did want to point out to you, maybe the obvious, that this property is owned by Mr. Adelot and his wife, and that they have abstained from any kind of conversations that deal with this, any meetings that deal with this. I've handled the project along with members of our Transportation Department and our Engineering Department, and without any assistance from Mr. Adelot, so before we begin, I just wanted to point that out to you. This application is being made, though, by Mr. Gary Wisnewski, who has a contract to purchase the property. His son is here this evening and will be representing the project. This site is zoned RS15, and it's Single Family Residential District, and it's approximately 6.8 acres, located along the northern side of West Thompson Lane. You can see it in the map before you shaded purple. The properties contiguous with this parcel are also zoned RS15. This property was annexed in two separate years. The front portion was annexed in 1986, and the rear in 1987, although it was one parcel at that time. When the property was annexed, there was no companion zoning change request, so the zoning that the property became was RS15, as our zoning ordinance defines it. The property to the north is also zoned RS15, however, it is the location of a landscaping business. The property directly to the west of this parcel is zoned RS15, and it's the location of the Bible Pathways Ministry, which is an institutional group assembly. It's not a church, but it is a religious type use. And on the, just further to the west, at the intersection of Leana Road and West Thompson Lane, is property zoned PCD and RMO. The PCD is Planned Commercial District, and it's the, was zoned PCD to allow offices for the Exchange Club, family centers to be located there, and the RMO property is zoned Mobile Home District, and it is the location of a very small mobile home park. The properties to the east of this parcel are zoned RS15, and they are developed estate, single-family lots, and one of those parcels also has mobile homes located upon it. Just across West Thompson Lane is the Windsor Green subdivision, which is developed with single-family detached homes, and there's also Hooper's Bottom, which is a feature which we are familiar with here in Murfreesboro. The North Side Baptist Church is the large parcel just across West Thompson Lane, across from this parcel. And this parcel is located close to where West Thompson Lane turns into North Thompson Lane. I think you can see that on the map before you. I've provided you with an orthophoto that shows the surrounding land uses. West Thompson Lane is a, is currently identified on our major thoroughfare plan to be improved. The applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting for this project on October 23rd, where members of staff were present, and the overwhelming, I think, comments and concerns that came from in that meeting are that folks are concerned about the existing traffic on West Thompson Lane, not so much what this development would create, but that the situation as it exists now needs to be improved, and of course, staff agrees with them. TDOT, this is a state highway. TDOT has plans to improve West Thompson Lane to a five-lane street with curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and a bike lane. And today I contacted Mr. Richardson to see if he knew where those plans were with TDOT, and he estimated that it's a five-to-10-year project. Of course, we have not a lot of control over TDOT's timeframe, but they are in the preliminary stages of design. Knowing that this is on the major thoroughfare plan, we asked the applicants to look at the plan and see if there's any additional right-of-way that may need to be donated. Mr. Taylor is the engineer for the project, and he looked at the site, and when construction plans are submitted to us, they will need to dedicate or donate to the city any right-of-way that may be required to improve West Thompson Lane to a five-lane street with sidewalks and a bike lane. I'm going to invite the representative of the applicant, Nick Wisnewski, to come to the lectern to go through the specifics of the Plan Development Program Book. You have had couriered to you a booklet called Tuscany, and that's what they're calling the project at this time, that defines the details of this book, or of this development. That will become the zoning for the property. So those commitments that are zoned, that are made in that book, will become a part of the zoning. You can see from the book that there are 34 single-family detached homes on the 6.8 acres, which would permit a density of five dwelling units per acre. The property is zoned RS15, and as it's currently zoned, a density of 2.9 dwelling units per acre is permitted. So the increase would be go from 2.9 dwelling units per acre to five dwelling units per acre. The homes are single-family detached homes, however, the form of ownership is a little bit different. Rather than owning the lot that surrounds your property, the folks who buy these homes will own their houses and then participate in an HOA, which will be responsible for the exterior maintenance of the homes and exterior maintenance of the property. There are some amenities as well that will be included in that. So as proposed, there are 34 single-family detached homes, but they'll be managed under one HOA. The streets in the subdivision will be private streets, although they'll be designed to look very similar to public streets. To encourage, I guess, the look and feel of exclusivity, they will have a gated entrance to the, from the private streets to West Thompson Lane, and those details are outlined in the books that you have before you. Also, the homes will be masonry homes, which means they can consist of brick, stone, or hardy plank. Vinyl won't be permitted in these homes. At this time, I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Wisnewski to the lectern to go through the details. If you have questions, I'd be most happy to answer them. The Planning Commission studied this matter, and the recommendation to you is that you approve it, and the vote was unanimous with all six members present that evening.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity tonight to present our project, Tuscany. My name is Nick Wisnewski, and I'm representing Landmark Homes. I'm also here with Mr. Matt Taylor, who's the project engineer, and also Mr. Rob Mulchen, who's the landscape architect, and they're both of SEC. We are here tonight to request a rezone on a property on West Thompson Lane from RS15 to PRD in order to create our project, Tuscany, which would be Murfreesboro's newest empty The rezone would go from RS15 to a PRD. The community would consist of 34 single-family detached homes on approximately 6.8 acres, which gives it a five dwelling units per acre. The project is geared towards empty nesters, however, it is not age restricted. The homes in the project will be single-family homes consisted of one and two stories. There will be a gated entry for the community to have the feel of security and exclusivity. Landmark Homes is the developer on this project, as well as they'll be the only builder in The ownership out there will be fee simple, similar to a townhome, where the buyers will own what's underneath the footprint of the home. There will be two other common areas, limited common and full common. Limited common being the driveways and the rear porches and patios. The reason for doing this is to create a area to where they have no maintenance on the exterior of their home, and they own what's underneath the footprint for a more manageable outside area. It will be governed by a third-party HOA, as well as the whole subdivision will be all underground utilities. The subdivision will be constructed within a single phase, and it's intent to be built out over the next three years. As Ms. Green stated, it will be private streets, however, the private streets will be similar to those of all the public roads we have in the rest of the subdivisions in the community, same curb and gutter, street width, everything to allow public vehicles, the right amount to turn around throughout the whole subdivision. We have also created additional visitor parking in the community for additional visitors. There will be sidewalks throughout most of the community. They will be in front of all the single-family homes, however, in front of the detention area, the sidewalk has been omitted on that one side of the street. There has been talk about the five-to-10-year project of widening Thompson Lane, and we have agreed to, when we do the plan for the final, we will dedicate that right-of-way needed for TDOT in the future. The buildings in Tuscany's single-family homes will range from 1,800 to 3,000 square feet. All the homes will have a minimum of a two-car garage, be one and two stories. As well as the setback areas, the garage will provide for two vehicles inside the garage. We have requested for. We have requested for 13-foot setbacks on the front to get the feel of a tight-knit community, however, we are recessing the garages from the front porch a minimum of seven feet to give us a total of minimum 20 feet from behind the sidewalk to the garage to allow for two more vehicles to be parked that will not be protruding out into the community sidewalk. The yards, front, rear, and sides will all be completely sited. The setbacks on the sides, you'll have 10 feet in between the buildings. With the exterior of the homes, they will be completely masonry, either fiber cement siding, stone, brick, or a combination of all three. On the screen, you can see a proposed conceptual elevation of what we propose to do out there. For streetlights in the community, instead of going with full streetlights throughout, we've opted to do mailbox streetlights to where on top of every mailbox, there will be a streetlight to provide a nice lighting up and down the roadway as you're going in and out. Also in the community, we are providing a pool and a clubhouse, which will start at the start of the first home being constructed. So by the time the first home is constructed, the community center and pool will be completed also. The pool in the community will be some sort of different than your normal pool. It'll be a smaller pool and only four foot deep. Reason being of that is to, the pool's not designed to be used for recreational use, but more for exercise use, to target towards the empty nesters. The clubhouse will also have partition areas inside for meeting spaces, for parties, for community gatherings, as well as an outdoor grilling patio and covered area. The amenities throughout the subdivision, when you pull in, the subdivision sign will be constructed of wood and stone material. There will be a landscape buffer across the front combined of columns with evergreen material in between them. The neighborhood, during our neighborhood meeting, there were no oppositions to the project, mostly concerned about traffic in the area. Everybody's concerned about the traffic on Thompson Lane. Not so much of how much we would add to it, being as the age that it's geared towards, but however, the current in and out of the subdivision. So we've done a traffic study on it, and we have agreed to do a left-hand turn lane into the subdivision off West Thompson Lane, which would be about six feet on both, going the right and left side. And your approaches, it would total in length of about 600, 700 feet, and that would be done at the time of construction as well. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for the applicant?
Nick, what happens with the stubout areas there to the, I guess, to the east and up to the north? Looks like there's two stubouts. Is that what those are?
The two stubouts are designed for access to those two homes. That's the way we could fit them in there. The stubout on the front, the entrance was pushed all the way to the right, however, when reviewing it with traffic, it was too close for comfort from the exit coming out of the church across the street. So we have put it down. The stubouts are for only access into those homes. It will not, and it will never be connected on to an adjacent property to make the subdivision bigger.
Same way in the back?
Same way in the back, sir, yes. Yeah, if the street would have just turned in order to fit our 34 homes, this is the best design that we could fit them in there.
Yeah, I have a little bit of pause just from a standpoint of, I was asking because it's going to be gated, and I was curious how a stubout's going to work on a gated, but you know, we're almost doubling the density by changing this zoning. You know, right now, we're talking about going from a high twos to a five-single-family dwellings per acre, including the roads and the pool, right? And the detention area?
Yes, sir.
How much space is in between these houses?
10 feet, sir.
10 feet?
10 foot, same as you have in other subdivisions similar to this, like Stradford Hall.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Wisnewski. We'll now open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 14OZ-57 to rezone an area at 728 West Thompson Lane to Planned Residential Development PRD District.
So moved.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 10. Pursuant to Resolution 14OZR-58 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .55 acres at 315 West Main Street from Planned Unit Development, PUD District to Central Business, CBD District. Mr. John Morris, applicant 2014-427. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning change request for approximately .55 acres that's located along West Main Street and North Front Street. It's on the intersection of West Main and North Front, and it's identified in the purple before you. This property is currently zoned PUD, that's Planned Unit District. It is, or was formerly the site of a furniture store which experienced structural failure and was demolished. In 2008, an application came before the Planning Commission City Council to change the zoning from CBD, or Central Business District, to PUD. The zoning to the north, east, and south of this property is zoned CBD, and this property is a part of our Central Business District. And the property across North Front Street is zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. In 2008, when that application came before you, it was a very ambitious and I think well-received application to construct a six-story structure with 46 dwelling units, retail space along West Main, and a three-level parking garage for tenants and customers. There was considerable interest in the project, however, the owners were unable to move forward in its application came to us just before the recession. The previous owners who requested that PUD no longer own the property, and Mr. John Morris has acquired it. He's not interested in developing the plan that was previously approved with a six-story structure and a mixed-use development. He'd like to request that the property go back to the former zoning that it was, back to CBD, so from PUD to CBD. The Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this item, and their recommendation to you was unanimous, and it's that you do change the zoning back from PUD to CBD. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay. We'll open the public hearing, and those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the mic on this zoning request. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 14OZ-58 to rezone an area located at 315 West Main Street to Central Business District CBD zoning.
Move approved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 14OAR-59 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider annexing approximately .72 acres located along Rack Court and consider a proposed plan of services for the area. Investment Partners, applicant 2014-506. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. The next public hearing is for you to consider a petition for annexation made by property owners for the property that's located on the map before you. This property looks like it's an individual parcel, however, it's a part of a larger parcel. The dark orange color is the portion of property that is not currently located in city limits. And then the remainder of the property is located in city limits and has frontage along John R. Rice Boulevard. The subject property is located south and west of John R. Rice Boulevard, and this was formerly known as Gresham Lane, at the very end of Rack Court and adjacent to the Deerfield Subdivision. You can see that lots to the south are all developed, single-family lots, and those are a part of the Deerfield Subdivision. The property is a part of the larger parcel which I mentioned with the frontage on John R. Rice Boulevard, and through the middle of which the city constructed and realigned John R. Rice Boulevard. You guys, you are probably familiar with the road realignment project. So this parcel actually was a part of a larger parcel that extended on the north side of John R. Rice Boulevard. The property is unusual in that it appears to be a separate lot at the end of Rack Court and part of the Deerfield Subdivision, however, it's not a separate lot. When the former owners requested annexation of their property in 2001, this area was not included in the annexation ordinance at the decision made by the City Council and Planning Commission. It was left out because many of the residents had concern that any commercial development here, and this was, of course, before John Rice Boulevard was constructed, would allow commercial traffic to drive through their single-family neighborhoods. The city also saw that as a concern and as a solution, left this property out of the annexation request. There was a home that was on the National Register of Historic Places, not on this property, but on the larger parcel. I think there was some confusion in the past that it was actually on this parcel that was left in the city. That home no longer exists, but you may remember that it formerly held events such as weddings there. I did include minutes of the meetings from 2001. I wasn't there, but I have read through the minutes and become familiar with them and some of the concerns at that time. The property is contiguous with existing city limits. The city limits are shaded yellow on the map that you have and have a green outline. It's located in the city's urban growth boundary, and it's not necessary for you to add any additional parcels to effectively annex this property. I've provided you with a plan of services prepared by planning staff, which outlines what services the city can provide and a timeframe for when those can be provided. There's also a tandem zoning change request, which will be the subject of the next public hearing. This public hearing is to consider the annexation of this property, for which a petition has been made. I'll also include some photographs of the property that will help orient you to the site, in addition to an ortho photo. The photos are slightly blurry, but you can see this is the view of the property from Rack Court. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, after which they determined that the property should be annexed according to the desires of the property owners. Representatives of the property owners are here this evening. They don't have a presentation prepared, but they are available if you have any questions. The next public hearing will discuss the matter of the zoning change request. This public hearing is to consider the annexation of the .72 acres. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Ms. Green, any questions for Ms. Green? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing, and those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium for this zoning request. I'm sorry, this would be an annexation request. I apologize. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for passage on First Reading Ordinance 14O859 to annex an area located along Rack Court and adopt for same plan of services.
So moved, Ms. Green. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 14OZR-60 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately .72 acres located along Rack Court as Highway Commercial, CH District, and Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO1 District, simultaneous with annexation. Investment Partners, applicant 2014-R29. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is a companion zoning change request with the previous annexation request which you just considered. It is for the .72 acres of property that is located along Rack Court and is a portion of a larger property which is currently located in the city limits. The remainder of the property that is located in city limits is currently zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. It's also within our Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO1. The request is for you to consider with the annexation, or simultaneous with the annexation of this property, also changing the zoning to CH and including it in the Gateway Design Overlay District as well. The owners have made the application simultaneous with the annexation and would like to have this one parcel under one jurisdiction and with the same zoning district. The planning staff, of course, advised the owners why this property was left out of the original request to annex and rezone it in 2001, specifically with the concerns with the traffic that could possibly drive through the single-family subdivision. The applicants, as a solution, have committed to not having any traffic access at all onto Rack Court. The majority of this property does have a closed depression, and this is the low point on the property, and they anticipate this being a part of their stormwater management plan. They would like to have the plans reviewed and approved by the city and as just one jurisdiction, not be required to go to both the city and county. If the property were developed as it is, they could develop the site with their stormwater management program, however, they'd have to go to the county planning to get a permission from them. And so as a matter of making things, I think, a little bit more smoother, they'd like to have all this property in one jurisdiction. They also believe that the city site plan review and GDO review requirements will add additional protections to this property that don't currently exist in the county. We have cautioned the applicants that the city staff would not be in favor of any situation that would bring traffic on Rack Court. It is a county road, and it's substandard as far as considering commercial street sections. Commercial streets are designed differently than residential streets, and certainly Rack Court is not designed to carry commercial traffic to this property. So in addition to their voluntary commitment to restrict any access, and I'm going to invite Mr. Reed to the lectern in just a moment to go through what they are proposing as a solution. When we, S D, staff will review this project, we'll make sure that this site is designed so that there will not be access onto Rack Court, because we think that the community has a valid concern with that access. At the time that this was being studied by the Planning Commission, there was some misinformation from some neighbors that believed a highway would be going through this property, and I think that that resulted from the name of the zoning district which is being considered, which is Commercial Highway District. The word highway is just a description of the type of uses, but there will not be any highway that goes through this property. And I think just the nomenclature kind of caused confusion, and you may have participated in that public hearing and heard some people who, or a person who was confused with that. And I just wanted to make that clear. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Reed to the lectern to go through the details of what they're proposing to do for this property. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, and after studying the matter, are requesting that you do change the zoning to CH and GDO1. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Green?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Jeff Reed. I represent Investment Partners who own this parcel. There are no, we do not have a current user for the parcel, so there's no existing certain plan for who will be using or occupying that property. We do want to get the property under one jurisdiction, so for planning approval process, we will not have conflicts between the city and county in that regard. There are no plans to access Rack Court, and the owners have committed to put restrictions in place that would prohibit them from accessing Rack Court. Rack Court certainly is not suitable for commercial traffic, and we would prohibit into the site plan for the larger parcel. And as has been noted, this is the low point in property, and it's our expectations that the bulk of this property will be used for detention or retention facilities or other stormwater-type systems and buffer as well to allow us to provide additional buffer between that commercial use and the remainder of the property and the adjoining residential property. So we appreciate your consideration tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jeff, what kind of, I mean, I appreciate, it sounds like you guys are cognizant and aware of all this, and the city is too. I'm, you know, I have a little, I mean, it kind of just looks like it's part of that subdivision, you know? I don't know how that, you know, the total history of it, she kind of went through it, but, you know, you'd hate to, even though you might not come through there and access Rat Court, which I appreciate also, but, you know, and I hope that it is the low spot and that's what it's used for. Are there any kind of assurances we could have to try to protect that from kind of coming down on to that?
The owner has committed to place a restrictive covenant on the property to prohibit that, any parcel there having access to Rat Court. So that will be something we'll record in the Registries Office, be binding around with the land and bind all future owners of that property.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you, Ms. Reed. All right, we'll now open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on first reading ordinance 14OZ60 to zone an area located along Rat Court as Highway Commercial CH District and Gateway Design Overlay GDO1 district.
Go move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 14OR61 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning dealing with parking requirements for commercial centers. Planning staff applicant 2014-806. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, sir. The next public hearing we're bringing to you is something that was prepared by planning staff, and it's a matter of making some changes to the parking requirements for commercial centers. The changes can be summed up in five bullets. The first is that one of the proposed changes is to change the definition for commercial center to increase the gross floor area allowed as restaurant from 25% to 35%. The second part of the change is to change the definition for neighborhood shopping center to increase the gross floor area allowed as a restaurant use from 25% to 30%. The third part of the change is to change the minimum parking requirements for commercial center for one regular parking space for each 200 square feet of floor area to one parking space for each 250 square feet of floor area. Fourth change is to change the minimum parking requirements for neighborhood shopping center from one space for each 200 square feet of floor area to one space for each 275 square feet of floor area. And the fifth change came up as a matter of Planning Commission's recommendation when reviewing a restaurant with a drive-through on South Church Street, the Dunkin' Donuts. It came to Planning Commission's attention that the separation requirements in the CF District that require separation from drive-up windows, dumpsters, gasoline canopies to residential property wasn't the same for planned residential property as it is for RS or RD properties. So the adjacent property was zoned PRD, and so the separation requirements did not apply. And so as a matter of fairness, the Planning Commission recommended that we revise these zoning ordinance so that those same separation requirements for drive-up windows, dumpsters, and gasoline canopies apply to residentially-used land in RZ, that's Zero Lot Line Residential District, PRD, Planned Residential District, and PUDD districts as the same as required for RS and RD. The first four changes are coming, deal directly with commercial centers and neighborhood shopping centers. The definitions for those were adopted in 2009, and planning staff came up with those definitions because before that time, there was no definition for a group of commercial uses that allowed them to share property. So we would go out to a large retail center, 25,000 square feet or larger, and identify every type of use in there and then add the uses up individually. Knowing commercial centers as they're designed, share parking, we wanted to come up with a standard that would apply when designing a commercial center. We've had some experience with those standards, and it's, some of the development community have pointed out that they would like, there's more parking that is shared than our ordinance accounts for, that we're requiring more parking than they believe is necessary. So restaurants require about three times as much parking as office or retail, and we know that restaurants can bring users into a commercial center that may not be there before, but you may also visit multiple sites when you visit the location. So the definition for commercial center allows 25% of that center to be used for restaurants. And the definition for restaurant includes whether it's a Dunkin' Donuts, whether it's a sit-down restaurant, whether it is an ice cream shop, the standards are the same. So we've come to find out that there tends to be more restaurant uses in these commercial centers, and restaurants, of course, have a higher demand for parking. So we've increased the amount of space that can be dedicated to restaurants and then also decreased the parking because our experience has led us to believe that we require too much parking. So those are the changes that we've outlined before you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. The Planning Commission is recommending to you that you approve these changes, and the recommendation was made unanimously.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 14O61 amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section 221, Section 26, and Chart 4 dealing with parking requirements for commercial centers. I have, just, Ms. Green, one question or really a comment that would be more for staff. As we're looking at these commercial centers, and we're really talking, when I was reading through, you know, it talked about 20,000 square feet and up, it may be time, as we're looking in the comprehensive plan and had this discussion with staff, that we look at for larger, I guess the word would be big-box retailers or big-box stores, that we may would look at, and add in a separate area when we start looking at what we're doing here, traffic, parking, maybe even when we're looking at appearance, landscaping, and some of those things. So as we get time and we're going through this comprehensive plan, it may be something that we look at and talk to our consultants on the larger developments like that, how we look at ways that we can improve the process, and also maybe if we do have a big box, that we make sure that the architecture meets our standards, that those things we can take care of, so maybe more just to put on a...
Certainly we can help you with that. I know big-box stores, as they're called, tend to exceed our parking standards, just talking about parking, they don't tend to exceed our architectural standards because we don't have them unless in the Gateway Design Overlay District. And so it's one of the criticisms is that they have seas of parking. So if you wanted to not have those, we may want to ask the consultants to look at ways you could design the parking so it doesn't look like it has a sea of asphalt, or put maximum parking. Right now, we have minimum parking standards, but big-box retailers always exceed our minimums. So in Murfreesboro, you can always go above and beyond the minimum, but the minimum is just where you need to go. If you want to limit the amount of parking, then you would need to add a maximum, and that's something we can talk to them about.
That's a, that's a great example, as we're looking at how these facilities are designed, instead of just having 1,000 parking spots and it's a blank area of asphalt, that we look at how to, you know, maybe have parking islands in different areas that will help that appearance and also help the way to make it look like a neighborhood store and make it look like that it's part of a neighborhood. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Move for passage on first reading.
Mr. Young, Mr. Shacklet. Motion and a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 14OR62 adopted by the City Council on November 13th, 2014, I'm making sure I'm reading the right one, yes, conduct a public hearing to consider amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning dealing with uses permitted, lot and yard requirements, and land intensity ratios. Planning staff applicant 2014-808. Notice of said public hearing was published in the November 24th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, sir. Final public hearing coming to you from Planning Commission tonight is to consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding the uses permitted, lot and yard requirements, and land use intensity ratio. The uses, or the changes to the zoning ordinance deal specifically with Chart 1 and Chart 2 in our zoning ordinance, and it could be said that Chart 1 and Chart 2, although located in the back of the zoning ordinance, are the heart of the zoning ordinance. Chart 1 is our uses permitted chart, and what Chart 1 is, and it's in your materials, but it lists the types of uses that could be located in Murfreesboro and in the various zoning districts with three symbols, an X, an S, or a blank space. And the chart explicitly states that if there's an X, it's a use permitted by right. If there's an S, then it's a use permitted by special use permit and application to the Board of Zoning Appeals is made, but there's no mention of what the blank means. And we would like to make changes to the zoning ordinance to explicitly state, although implied, but to explicitly state that if there is a blank, then it's a use that's not permitted. Those who work in our community are familiar with this, but we oftentimes work with people who maybe aren't as familiar with the zoning ordinance, and so that would be a matter of clarity. It would also, the change would also take footnotes that are located at the end of Chart 1 and place them in a separate section. The same can be said with Chart 2, which deals with our bulk requirements. Both Chart 1 and Chart 2 have a list of, a significant list of footnotes after them, and unless you're aware that you need to look in the footnote for this information, then you may not, may not know to look. Oftentimes, people don't realize you need to look in the footnotes to find this information. So we believe that taking this information out of the footnotes and putting it in a chapter will make it easier for people to find who read the zoning ordinance. These amendments aren't necessary. They don't change any of the meat of our zoning ordinance, but we think it makes it easier and more clear for people to read the zoning ordinance. We think it makes a little, makes more sense. The Planning Commission also conducted a public hearing for this matter, and their recommendation to you is that you do approve these changes unanimously, as they're a matter of cleaning up the document which we use and helping people read it. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, seeing none, we'll conduct a public hearing. Those speaking or wanting to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on first reading ordinance 14O62 amending the Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Sections 11, 14, and 15, Charts 1 and 2 pertaining to uses permitted, lot and yard requirements, and
Move for passage on first reading.
Second.
Mr. Young, Ms. Kels Harris. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the principal planner with regards to scheduling of public hearings to consider rezoning area along Warrior Drive, CH to RS15, rezone area along Bridge Avenue, RM16 to CH, annex area along Salem Highway at Armstrong Valley Road, and amend Baskin-Wood PRD to remove area and rezone to RM16 along Joby-Jackson Parkway.
Got your face with me, didn't you?
Not yet. I'm following the list here.
Sure. During its regular meeting in December 3rd, 2014, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the four matters described by Mayor McFarland and listed in my memo below. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission discussed the matters and took action to recommend their approval. It is planning staff's recommendation that you schedule public hearings for this item. These items.
Mayor, would you recommend January 15?
Hearing no conflicts, I move to set a public hearing January 15.
Second.
You've got to move fast, guys.
Mr. Young made a motion. Mr. Shacklet has a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the staff planner to schedule public hearings to consider annexation progress reports for annexed areas effective one year along Highway 231, North Lebanon Highway, south of Linford Drive, and west of South Church Street, Osborne Lane, Memorial Boulevard, and Blanton Drive, and areas effective six months along Veterans Parkway, south of John Bragg Highway, Elum Road, New Salem Highway, Manchester Highway, New Salem Highway, and South Church Street. Ms. Green, you were right, I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis.
She can't do it all.
I understand.
I'm here to talk about public hearings for annexation progress reports. Public Chapter 1101 of 1998 enacted by the General Assembly requires that six months after the effective date of an annexation and annually thereafter until services have been extended according to such plan, a municipality must publish in a newspaper of general circulation a progress report for the extension of services and any changes proposed therein. The law further requires that the legislative body of a municipality hold a public hearing on such progress reports after a publication of notice in the newspaper. The annexations for the areas described, that I'm about to describe, have been effective for at least one year. These areas include an annexation request in 2012-503, approximately 12.4 acres along Lebanon Highway, Highway 231 North, the effective date was March 9th, 2013, an annexation request approximately 1.02 acres south of Linford Drive and west of South Church Street, the effective date was June 15th, 2013, an annexation request approximately 1.81 acres at 841 Osborne Lane, the effective date was July 6th, 2013, an annexation request approximately 3.6 acres along Memorial Boulevard, the effective date was June 8th, 2013, and an annexation request approximately 3.27 acres on Blanton Drive, the effective date was July 12th, 2013. Planning staff also recommend City Council to schedule a public hearing to consider the progress reports and plan of services for these annexed areas, and attach to your copy, attach as a copy of each progress report and an illustration of each area. The council needs to schedule a public hearing and authorize the city recorder to publish a public notice. Also, annexations, the annexation ordinance for areas described below have been effective for at least six months, and these areas include an annexation request approximately 27 acres along Veterans Parkway, the effective date was October 26th, 2013, an annexation request approximately 272 acres south of John Bragg Highway, the effective date was November 16th, 2013, an annexation request approximately 3.11 acres on Elum Road, effective date was November 6th, 2013, an annexation request approximately 477.5 acres along New Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway, the effective date was January 18th, 2014, an annexation request of approximately 306 acres along Manchester Highway, the effective date was February 15th, 2014, an annexation request approximately 67.12 acres along New Salem Highway, the effective date was February 15th, 2014, and annexation request of approximately 18.52 acres along South Church Street, the effective date was April 14th, 2014. acres along South Church Street, the effective date was April 12, 2014. Again, the planning staff recommends the City Council schedule a public hearing for all these annexation requests, or annexations, to consider the progress reports of these plans and services for these annexed areas. And included in your general materials are progress reports and illustrations of each area. The council needs to schedule a public hearing and authorize the city recorder to publish a public notice. I'll be happy to answer any question you may have.
Mayor, we would again recommend January 15.
Do you anticipate, Mr. Lewis, that this will be a lengthy proposition?
I'm sorry?
All these reports, do you think that'll be a lengthy proposition?
A lengthy proposition? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
How long will it?
Oh, they shouldn't last very long.
Okay, because we've got four public hearings that same night already.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think there's much to talk about unless somebody has a question about one of the annexations that have occurred, if there's any problems with the services being provided, and to date, I don't think there's had, there hasn't been many, many comments on any of them.
Thank you.
We'll be here the 8th, too, right? That'll be our open mic night. Does it make any sense to split them up? That'll be our four-hour session.
I think our thought was, most of the time, these annexation progress reports have had very little comment and public participation. Council may not meet next week, which would mean our first council meeting coming back from the new year will be January 8, and if we have a longer agenda, I thought we might separate the two.
Yep. So moved, 15th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Lance, before Mr. Gore gets up, I think with Mr. Ailat Friday being, last Friday being his last day, and I know we celebrated last Thursday a week ago, but maybe if you wouldn't mind updating the council on how that's going now with, as far as who's overseeing the planning department now.
Sure. I'd be glad to, in case you didn't get a chance to look at your email today. Gary Whitaker, the Building and Codes Director, will be our interim planning director. As you know, Ms. Logan will be leaving us here in a few weeks, and so we needed someone to pinch-hit for us in the planning department. Appreciate Gary stepping up. He's already been meeting with the planning staff. And Mr. Robert Holtz, the Assistant Building and Codes Director, is going to step up and pick up some of the slack while Mr. Whitaker spends time in planning.
Thank you, Ms. Schrems. Okay, we'll move to item number 17 and consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Director with regards to a purchase agreement for 16-inch water main on New Nashville Highway by Consolidated Utility District of Rutherford Kelly.
Mayor, the council takes the opportunity tonight. At this last Water and Sewer Board meeting, staff as well as the Water and Sewer Board is recommending the sale of approximately 11,500 linear feet of a 16-inch water line along New Nashville Highway to the Consolidated Utility District. You can see on your agenda on page 227, there's an exhibit, the 16-inch main that we're looking to sell to CUDs effectively between State Route 840 and Florence Road. The attached, there's an attached purchasing agreement and also an emergency water transfer agreement in the form of a mutual aid, has been developed and agreed upon to facilitate the sale. Approving this sale effectively allows for the following benefits: full utilization of an asset that is currently dedicated for emergency water transfer only; it allows an abandonment of an emergency transfer pumping station and those associated power and maintenance costs; and it actually defers the cost of constructing a parallel water line along this US-41 corridor between State Route 840 and Nissan Drive. This actually, the conversation about this sale came up in November of 2012. It's taken us a couple of years to hammer out these agreements, even though it was mutually beneficial, it's just sometimes tough to get all the language right. Effectively, they're looking at purchasing, CUDs looking at purchasing 21,600 linear feet between Murfreesboro and Smyrna. We looked at the April 2013 board meeting and then the August 2014 meeting, we agreed upon a purchase price of around, of $330,000. We would have an outlay of $75,000, and we would save about $12,000 annually by abandoning that transfer pump station. This 16-inch line was installed in 1982, so it's about 34 years old. At that time, there were no boundaries, water service boundaries, so we did not know, Smyrna and Murfreesboro CUD had no fixed boundaries. In the mid-'80s, our water district got a fixed boundary, so this part of line actually goes beyond our service area into CUD's area. And so, in order for CUD not to have to build a parallel line, they thought it would be in good form to purchase this line from us, and we found real, no real adverse impact on us to do that. It would actually, I think, help, help the community. So, we will be abandoning this emergency transfer between Smyrna, but we would be building two other interconnections with CUD. One would be at Compton Road, and one would be at, where we would be able to deliver water to CUD's system, and another interconnect at Tiger Hill where CUD's pressure would be allowed to deliver us water. So we would actually be getting an interconnect instead of, say, 3 million gallons per day maximum capacity, we would be able to get almost 5 million gallons a day at maximum capacity. So, we finally got the mutual aid agreement signed. The mutual aid agreement is actually between Smyrna, CUD, and Smyrna, where CUD would not be charging us any conveyance fees if we actually had to get water from Smyrna. So we wanted to make sure we could get that water from Smyrna and CUD wouldn't charge us for transferring that to us. The physical impact is effectively about a quarter of a million dollars to the Water and Sewer Department that we would deposit into our working capital reserve account, plus we'd have those annual savings. So, we would, I'm available for questions, but we would request your approval.
Mayor, although this has been pending for a little over two years, I understand that there are still some tweaks being looked at by the attorneys, and would ask that you approve this if you do, subject to final wording changes that might be approved by the city attorney.
That's pretty standard, yeah.
Well, my comment is, I'm glad to see this being worked out. It's something that's been needed for a long period of time, but also, the mutual share or emergency shared also in your document sets, after each of these utilities have met the needs of their existing customers, that is the available water that would be used, so it's not going to have any effect on existing.
No, sir. If one utility is unable to deliver the water to the adjoining utility, if there's not a surplus in effect, then it doesn't obligate us, and we would only be able to do it and aid one another if we had surplus water to deliver.
Right.
If there are no more questions, I'll make a motion that we approve pending legals, final terms, terminologies, or wording, or whatever.
Second.
All right, Ms. Wright, we have a motion to second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gore. Item 18A, letter from the city attorney, Assistant City Attorney, regarding Resolution 14R-28 regarding vesting.
Mayor and members of council, staff request that council adopt this resolution to establish what constitutes approval of a development plan for the purposes of vesting rights under the Tennessee Vested Property Rights Act. Some of you may be aware that our legislature enacted the vested property rights act this last session, and it was signed by the governor. The act becomes effective January 1 of 2015, and a copy of that act was attached to your materials. It's kind of in two sections that are virtually identical but not quite. Section 1 applies to county planning, and Section 2, that as I mentioned, starts on page 7, applies to the city planning. Under the, there's been controversy for a number of years in Tennessee as to what constitutes a vested right for a builder or developer who has a plan approved, and at what point does it become vested such that it cannot be changed without some compensation to it? Under this, the act has established standards for this, that's their intent, and the standards they've adopted are as follows. The development standards that are in existence on the date a preliminary development plan is approved are vested for three years from the date of approval. And if the applicant obtains approval of a final plan and secures appropriate necessary permits and actually commences site preparation during that three-year period, then he has an additional two years, and not from those dates, but two more years from the end of his three-year period, to actually start construction. And if he does start construction within that five-year period, he has a vested right to the development standards that are in effect back when the preliminary plan was approved until the project is complete, but subject to a maximum of 10 years. If a, if a plan has, a project has two or more phases, each phase will vest separately, but the subsequent phases will vest with the same rights that were in place the date of the first approval. But with multiple plans or multiple phases, there's a maximum of 15 years that vesting is approved. There are exceptions to that, exceptions for changes in development standards that might be mandated by state or federal governments. If there are concerns that are life, safety, risk, concerns, there can be changes by the local regulations that that, I expect that'll be difficult to establish if it's not something mandated, but we won't know that until in the future. And also, if the applicant, the developer comes in and changes, wants to change his plan, then he would lose his vested rights and he would have to proceed under the standards that are in effect at the date of his change. The act does authorize the local government to identify, by either an ordinance or a resolution, to identify the types of instruments or development plans that will give vested rights, and also to specify what action constitutes approval for the purpose of establishing the vested rights. So in accord with that authorization, we prepared the resolution that's attached and for the purpose of establishing both the documents and the action that will result in vested rights. There's no direct fiscal impact, fiscal impact from this. Planning Commission did review this at their last meeting and has recommended approval. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Ms. Schrems, what happens if a development's approved, and say for some reason it sits there, and then we can't, for some reason we couldn't supply water in sewer, or say the sewer capacity went away in that, in that time? What would happen in that case?
I think that's a good question. I don't know, and I don't believe I can answer that right now. I think we would, just speaking generally, we would have to be cognizant, once we've approved a plan, a project, that we would have to be cognizant of the commitment for that as more plans come in, more projects come in, better word than plans for that. But if something happened, certainly something beyond our control happens, for some reason our available water to us gets reduced, that would certainly be beyond our control, and that would hurt not only that approved plan, but probably a lot of others, too. And again, they did recognize that from time to time, the state and federal governments give us mandates about what we need to do for development standards, and the recent ones that have been both costly to developers and troublesome for us, some of the stormwater standards and the stream bank protection plans and that kind of thing, but if the federal and state government mandate that, then we will change, you know, we'll change it accordingly. But if we locally wanted to change the stream setback or something, that would probably be something that would not, we could not make that apply to a development that's already been approved and has vested rights. And one of the, the part about the change, I think, is important. Long-term projects, projects that last several years inevitably have some change down the road. The market changes, the needs of the community change, and you start out with, and we see that on our rezonings, a variety of them that are going on now, what seemed like a good idea when it was done, for whatever reason, is not, not panning out, and the developer, the owner comes back in and wants to change something, and in that circumstance, then we, any change in development standard would apply to the, to the new plan.
So can I back up, just to, or ask you to back up? We kind of dove right into the details of what the state had done.
Right.
I mean, essentially, what you're suggesting or asking us to do is to basically just adopt the state's, is that what's happening here?
Well, we don't really have any choice. The state applies to us. What we can do is set forth what, what instruments, what documents within the development cycle are going to create vested rights, and also to what constitutes an adoption. So for instance, we looked at whether we wanted to eliminate some of the steps in the planning process. Just very, very generally, you start with a master plan, and then a preliminary plan, and then a construction plans, and then a final plan. Well, did we want to eliminate any of those? And we decided definitely we did not. We want to keep all those. And so, all of those, when they're approved, will grant vested rights as of the date of approval. So then the next step was to look and say, okay, what should constitute approval? And essentially, for approvals that are by either the Planning Commission or the council, the effective date of that approval is the date that the minutes are adopted and approved from the meeting where the motion was made, or in the case of, most of what comes to council for this will be plan developments, because when you approve a plan development, you're approving the development standards that are within that. There's a site plan and a lot of things in that booklet that become the operating rules for that plan, for that project. That approval will be effective when the minutes are approved. So for instance, if we were into January and you approved one tonight, when the minutes for this meeting are approved, that'll be effective. That gives, you know, I don't think we've had it happen very often, but it certainly can happen that someone, that when the minutes are reviewed, someone says, oh, wait, that's not, that's not what we meant. And there's, you know, so we want to make sure that there's a chance for everybody to be certain, because it is being locked in for a substantial period of time, and we want, want to try to have certainty of what we're locking in. Similar, when a site plan is approved by the BZA, in the function of, for instance, if the BZA approves a temporary food facility, that someone wants to set up a food cart business for certain weekends, and when the BZA approves that, there'll be a drawing that shows where the cart's going to be and where the trash can's going to be. It'll basically be a site plan. It'll be a simple one, but it'll be a site plan, and the effective date of that approval is when the BZA minutes are approved, when the motion was made to approve that. There are limited circumstances where the planning director will have authority to approve a final plan. If it, I can't recite the circumstances, but it's a fairly, if it's a small project in fairly limited circumstances, it does become the Planning Commission or council. The planning director has the authority to do it. In that circumstance, we're saying it's approved when the planning director signs that document. In that circumstance, we're saying it's approved when the planning director signs that document. And the other one is that the building official, the building codes director, when a building permit is issued, in certain circumstances, like if you've got an existing subdivision, everything's laid out, and now someone comes in to build a house, and that's essentially a mini-site plan, and where the house is actually going to sit, and how things are going to be connected, when the building official signs that building permit, that is the approval of that, of that site plan and the building standards at that time. I think it's rare that a building permit on a single-family house is going to have issues that are going to be lasting that long, but I suppose it is possible.
Does this have to be done this year?
Yes.
So there are pieces of this that are discretionary, that we made up, so to speak, that staff would, you know, made up, and there's pieces of this that we're just doing whatever the state said we had to do. Is there, how much of this is discretionary, and was any of that, you know, changed? So for instance, that we say, all right, if you want to be part of the GDO or not part of the GDO, where you used to have to have Council approval for that, now it's just the planning director can approve that?
No, no change of any, nothing of that nature is changing.
What, my understanding is, what the state is standardizing is, once you have granted a vested status, then that term and the implications of that are standard to the communities.
Not what's standard for this project.
For this project.
Right. What, I don't want to use a name, but there, in a nearby town, there was a development that was developing out over a period of time. Midway through the development, the city changed its standards for road construction in terms of how thick the asphalt layer had to be, layers had to be. The developers complained that this was going to hurt them desperately, they'd financed everything, they had everything set up for X dollars for building roads, and now, as they finished out their development, it was going to be X plus something substantial to build the roads. This has been, been kicked around in the legislature for at least three terms, and this year, a, I guess I'd say a compromise, because some drafts I've seen would have hurt, we would have felt more pain from, hard to say if they're better or worse, but it would have been more difficult for us to work with. And what finally came out this last session is the bill that's attached. It was pushed largely by the Home Builders Association, and as I say, they've been working on this for three years, and it's now passed. Our discretion, as a city, our discretion is to establish what constitutes approval. And so that's what this resolution is to do. And for instance, if we were to decide, we don't want master plans anymore, we're going to forget those, because we don't want an approval to last that long. Staff has decided that's not a good idea. Master plans are valuable, and a valuable tool for us, but we want to make sure that it's not going to be approved, just because if someone walks into the planning director's office with a master plan, and the planning director says, gee, that looks good, well, that's not approval. It's not approval until the Planning Commission has approved it, and the motion for approval is, the minutes from that meeting are then approved by the Planning Commission.
Well, is it approved at the Planning Commission level?
A site plan would be. Now, really, the only thing that comes to-
So approval doesn't come to us before the final, I mean, it would be-
No, not for a site plan.
Okay.
And preliminary plats and final plats don't come to Council. Plan developments that are actually separate zoning ordinances that apply to that particular project, plan developments all come to Council, and those are not approved until the minutes that are stat, that are giving that approval on third reading are approved.
So that's what we did tonight, as an example.
Right. We changed a couple of plan developments tonight. And again, if we were in January doing this, that approval would be effective for vesting purposes when the minutes for this meeting are approved.
Mr. Ives is right, there was a great deal of discussion over the last couple of years in the General Assembly, you know, for the development community, as they began to, you know, develop plans and budgets, as municipalities may change codes, you know, that was disruptive to them. You know, on the other hand, part of what, you know, the cities were saying to the legislature was, sometimes we discover our development standards aren't working. And, you know, in the case of the asphalt, maybe there was, you know, high incidence of pavement failures, so they wanted to make the change. And so, there's, you know, pros and cons on both sides. You know, the cities were concerned, well, if you continue with that pavement thickness, then perhaps there's going to be more pavement failures, and the developers also, you know, knew that, you know, they'd build a budget, and try, you know, sometimes the market changes, and they wanted their dream and their vision to move forward, and so there really was a lot of discussion. As Mr. Ives went through, and it's what you see in the ordinance, we're trying to make clear that the various things that happen in our community development-wise, that we're clear about what they are and when the date is set, so that we can have some certainty. We didn't want this to be blurry, because we talk about approvals and development. Well, there's a lot of different places, and sometimes it's the city council, sometimes it's the BZA, sometimes it's the Planning Commission. That's why there is the amount of detail in there, so we could address the situations, and everybody would know what the rules are.
And if the developer comes in and makes any changes to the original approved plan, then the clock resets, and everything resets? Is that, is that a way of saying it, or?
It's not, to me, clearly defined. I mean, I'm sure there is some level of change that would not impact your vested rights. But to use a, kind of a gross example, if you've got RS-15 lots that are approved, and you come in and want to move it to RS-10, that's going to be a change, and you're going to start over. If you're providing, you know, an extra 20-foot setback, and you come in and want to eliminate that and actually have a narrow, a shorter setback, that's going to be a change.
Really, what we're talking about-
There's got to be some level of detail change that would not upset the vested rights. But I don't know that I can, I can't define exactly what that is right now.
An example would be, sort of an easy example would be if, in our development standards under a certain site plan that's approved, that it's approved for overhead electric, and then we change our development standards within the city and say, everything has to be underground, then that, a project that was approved under that site plan, if it's eight years down the road, and it's, can go overhead electric?
If they've done the other things to keep their vesting up, yes. That our change to all underground would not be effective for that development. Now, and this probably wouldn't be a good example, but if we could show that the change we made was for a serious life safety issue, perhaps we could then say that that change, that new standard applies. I can't give an example of that. I don't think that changing from overhead electric to underground electric would be that kind of change, I'm confident it would not. I'm sure there are some things that we have right now that we could recognize and say, wow, that's a life safety issue, we need to change that. I don't know of any, but that is, at least, in theory, that's possible. The other thing I want to, this, generally at least, does not apply to building codes, so when the new addition of a building code comes out and changes some building code standards, those are not grandfathered vested the way, the way the development standards are. And I guess I'd say, development standards, I think, if we require a three-foot sidewalk, and next year we decide we want a five-foot sidewalk, that's a development standard. If we require a 20-foot setback from the property line, and we want to change that to 35-foot setback, that's a development standard that is vested.
So I guess in essence, what we're saying, that once we approve something, and then we want to make a change, then the grandfather clause will apply, unless it's life safe?
Correct.
In essence, is that what we're saying about the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. In a nutshell, that's what we're saying?
Yes.
All right. That's a good point. And really, this is a, we talk about water quality erosion control, this is, we're being mandated from the state to do this, so this is, it's an unfunded mandate, or it's a, we're mandate, being mandated to change our standards to this.
No, we're just being told that when we make changes to our standards, generally speaking, they're not going to apply to someone who gets, whose rights are vested in the older standards.
And I mean, that's a fair protection for the builder and the developer, too. I mean, you know, because we can't allow us to go in there and change the situation for a developer midstream that's going to increase his cost to double, and expect them to be able to absorb it. I mean, I think that's fair to the developer. So I understand where they're coming from, and why the state's mandating that. I mean, whether it's mandated or not, but that's probably the wrong term.
That's a good word on this one. Actually, I think they just adopted it. They adopted it. It's the state law, it applies to us. They gave us some latitude, again, to decide what instruments will create vested rights, and what the approval is that creates those vested rights. Now, you know, again, if we wanted to take our master plans as they exist today and say, those don't create vested rights, we could not do that. Because with the amount of information that's in our master plans, that's exactly the kind of a preliminary development plan that the state was, is aiming to.
It really doesn't make sense.
The sketch on the back of a napkin, not so much.
Right. So, and change issues the word uncertainty, that's what we're trying to do, is remove the uncertainty for the developer, so that once we've committed to him that he can build something, that the change is, basically, he's got 15 years, or almost up to 15 years.
10 to 15, depending if it's-
Depending on when he starts the project. But, so, I think that's fair. I mean, it, and I think it's a good idea. I mean, I think that, to give them protection with the vested protection, I think that's something that needs to be there.
Especially after this last recession.
Right. Is there, does any of this stuff apply the other way? You know, as far as change, you know, a request to change, any of the, you know, from a standpoint, if the developer wants to change something, you know, if they want to change the PUD to look like this versus this, I mean, so he just has to go back through the original price, so it doesn't, it doesn't-
He loses his protection that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's certainly discretion on all of that, at the time that the developer comes in and says, I want to change X in my plan development, we might all look at it and say, that's a good change, you can keep your vested standard, vested development standards, we're fine with that, make the change and go forward.
I see, yeah.
But if it's, if standards have changed significantly, and there's a real issue, we would at that point be able to say, okay, fine, you can make this change, but you got to come to the, to the new standards. And then he's got a choice, make the change and get new standards, or leave it alone and keep the old standards. So there's going to continue to be a trade-off, there's going to be some negotiating and discussions back and forth, and I, it's going to, the transition will be a little difficult. And one thing we do need to do is make sure that we have documented what the standards are from time to time as they, as they shift, so that we know what we're dealing with five years later, 10 years later.
If everybody's comfortable, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
All right, we have a motion to consider, to pass the Resolution 14R28, adopting a policy regarding approval of development plans for purposes of the attachment of vested property rights.
Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Under Boarding Commission appointments, we have an appointment to the Limeball Library Board to reappoint Mr. Dick and Kidwell, and appoint Mr. Timber to fill the vacancy of Chantos Serena.
Move forward.
Second.
Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Ms. Wright, any beer permits?
None tonight.
No growler permits?
None tonight.
Any payment of statements?
Yes, sir, just lay down on your desk.
I don't have any.
Having thoroughly reviewed the payments, I would suggest that we pay the bills.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business from staff or city council? Mr. Crumley.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, you should have at your desk a one-page letter from Mr. Calo recommending change order number two to a housing rehabilitation project at 415 East Castle Street. This is a $1,700 change order, includes repairing or replacing damaged roof trusses, repairing or replacing paneling in the house, and the painting of at least one bedroom. Funds are available in the community development budget, and Mr. Calo recommends your approval.
You have a recommendation in front of you?
So moved. So.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You've got some information that Mr. Crumley put before you, not really, unless the council wants to discuss, discuss it tonight, but it's mainly just information for our next meeting for you to read over. Any other business from staff or city council?
Mayor, I've got one question, and it seems like a couple months ago, we've used the term "local publication" several times tonight. If I remember the fellow's name, I think it's Pete Doughty, who was with the reader, came in and felt like he met the minimum qualifications for publications, yet I haven't noticed him getting any of the ability to advertise public notices. Did he indeed meet those standards, and have we made the effort to accommodate that, or is that something that we've put on hold?
We had actually put the bidding of our public advertisement on the plate of our purchasing director. She got here last week, and she and I spoke about that as late as today. So, once Ms. Pemsle got here, we've asked her to begin drawing up some bid specifications for bidding out our public advertisements, and I would hope she can get that done in the next couple of weeks, and we'll have a competitive selection.
Yeah, it's fantastic. I think our open mic's really paying off for us, dividends now with the, some of the progress we've made, and just don't want anything to fall through the cracks.
We're working on it.
Council members, I know, I don't think we'll, not sure if we'll meet next week, but-
Not unless something comes up that needs your attention next week, so we will try not to meet.
So I think now would be our opportunity to wish everyone, and also the staff and the citizens, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And with that-
Merry Christmas to all, and to all.
A good night.
A good night.